Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00. Today is Monday, October 6th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Calamasa City Council Meeting. Darlene, can we have roll call plates?
Ms. McKendrick?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Please excuse me if I cannot attend this evening.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
And Mr. Protem Cervantes?
Here.
And Ms. Molina?
Here, thank you. And for the record, let it reflect that our city manager Colbo is here, our city attorney Flowers is here, city clerk Gertis is here, our next director Reed is here, planning director Lucia, pub groups director Shakir is here, city engineer Thornton, our battalion chief Raposa is here, and sheriff Captain Northrup. Thank you all for being here. Chief Northrup, would you like to lead the pledge? Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That takes us to communications from the public. We have two. Joyce McIntyre? Former mayor and councilwoman?
Joyce McIntyre, I'm here to clarify my office as a mayor. I'm here to make some comments about the city council meeting. Joyce McIntyre, I mentioned we have one deputy sheriff 24/7 is not enough. I should have said the City of Calamasa Police Contract is for one deputy. On page 63 of the city's 2526 budget for police, the current contract includes patrol services, one problem-oriented policing deputy, and a community services officer 24 hours, 365 days. Additional specialized services are included with the contract on an as-needed basis, including SWAT, gang, aviation, K-9, community behavior assessment team, sorry, human trafficking team, forensic technicians, central homicide units, hazardous device technicians, 911 dispatch services, and search and rescue, all on as-needed basis. At some point, I would like you guys to give a report on the costs and how many times those are called out. Goals and objectives for our deputy sheriff. To serve as a problem-oriented policing deputy, to focus on problems as traffic enforcement, speeding DUI, increase collaboration with outside agencies, community homeless within Calamasa, engage in direct enforcement when crime thefts or vandalism occur within Calamasa, enhance relationships with members of the community through neighborhood watch programs. The deputy accomplishments, performance measures, police department budget for 2526, personnel costs, operation maintenance, the total police budget is $2,930,632. All police budget and overview specialized services can be found on pages 63 through 66. Thank you, mayor and council, for listening.
Thank you. Donna Johnson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Donna Johnson. I live in the Californian. Please forgive me, I'm a little weak. But I'm here to ask why we have hired a hearing officer with very little experience, other than Placer County claims that he meets the standard for administrative hearing officer. Publicly, he does not show any of the MRL landlord tenant, mobile home, anything like that. He doesn't show any of that on his website or in his case history. His case history actually doesn't look very good. Okay, if we go to Mark Alpert, who is Peter Wang's attorney, and you look at his case history over and over and over and over, he has represented park owners, and he has gone against the city. He has just mobile home, parks, just gore. And our attorney doesn't show anything. How is, I don't understand how that's fair. How is it fair? If you can just tell me sometime how that's fair and how we're going to win with someone who doesn't know compared to someone who really knows? How are we going to win that? Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to approval of the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances. Do any of my colleagues want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
No.
Yes.
I believe that on item number eight, that I believe you probably need to record extension due to your proximity to the property.
Oh, good call. Thank you.
The item can remain on the consent calendar. We'll just note that you're, for the record, that you're abstaining from voting on item eight.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items. I will abstain from voting on item number eight.
I'll move to approve the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye for everything but item number eight. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to our sheriff captain report. Captain Northrup.
Good evening, mayor, council. We just covered some Part I crimes for September. We had nine assaults, one burglary, 19 thefts, for a total of 19, or 29 Part I crimes. We had a total of 513 incidents for September. Year-to-date, Part I crimes are up about 18% from the same time last year, and they're up about 12% over the last three years. In response to some complaints that the community, from community members, we are currently working towards a public safety campaign focused on parking enforcement near schools. California Daylighting Law Assembly Bill 413 came into effect on January 25th, or January 1st, 2025, and prohibits parking, stopping, standing, a vehicle within 20 feet from a crosswalk on the approach side of the road. The law aims to improve visibility for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists by daylighting intersections, which clears obstructions like parked cars to prevent collisions and enhance safety. The restrictions applies to both marked and unmarked crosswalks and does not require the curbs to be red. We're going to work on some public education. We're pushing out some public safety announcements on our social media websites and platforms so you can kind of keep an eye out for those things. And then, once we get that education piece in place, we will then start targeted enforcement. Just want to comment a little bit on some of the community's comments tonight. So there is, there is a patrol deputy per shift in the city, right? 24 hours of coverage. But the county is able to supplement that when needed. So we can have county deputies come in and out of the city as needed and supplement anything that the city may need. On, and then you start talking about some of the services that comes with that contract includes detectives, SWAT, and some of the things that were mentioned. On January 6th, we had an incident that initially was reported as a shooting, right? Deputies, our crime suppression unit, POP deputies, and investigators responded to the scene. They started working the information, and investigator wrote search warrants, SWAT team identified the location of a suspect, and ultimately served a search warrant, right? That's one incident that occurred in September where we had all these resources that are paid for through the contract that came to bear in one single call for service. Our CBAT deputy is basically the community behavioral assessment team. So for September, he had three on-duty holds, four patrol assists, one outreach, and he conducted six follow-ups. And then our POP deputy, he works in the city. He does follow-ups on cases that may not rise to the level of investigator. He also does saturation patrols. He's attached to the crime suppression unit for the Cabazon Station. Under the leadership of Sergeant Sedano, they have the POP deputy for Calamasa, CBAT. We have a deputy assigned to the Marango Tribe, and then we have three deputies assigned to the county area. Those deputies will do saturation patrols in those areas to try to reduce crime, to deal with traffic issues. Anywhere where we need additional enforcement outside of patrol, those deputies will then be deployed into those areas for those problems. Any questions?
Just to clarify, the POP deputy is a deputy first, correct?
Correct.
So if there's an assistance needed by the other deputy or some crime happening that he's close to, he can take that and handle that, correct?
Yes, normally, so if there's something that occurs in the city and he is nearby, he will respond to that.
Copy, thank you.
He does get additional training beyond what most deputy sheriffs receive?
I just wanted to make a comment. I had, at our last public event, I had spoken with Deputy Sedano, and he was telling me about all of the, what he's responsible for. And I think he's new in that position, so, or something like that.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just, I'm, thank you for bringing this to our attention. So my only question, Will, is that the information that the captain was referring to, is that going to be linked through our website if people wanted to get that information? Is that information that we share normally?
Yes.
Yeah, in the monthly report that Sheriff, or Captain Northrup provides, yeah, that's on our website.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, and then as far as the social media posts, yeah, we can, we can work to repost that if you guys choose.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report tonight. Okay, that brings us to our fire chief report, battalion chief Raposa.
Thank you, mayor, council. I'm going to go over the response data, our report which was pulled on October 4th. Our year-to-date total calls, 18,064. That time last year, October 4th last year, we ran 14, I'm sorry, 1,864. We ran 1,478. We've had a 26% increase in call volume in one year. That's pretty significant. Medical aid calls-wise, 1,363. Miscellaneous calls, public assists, helping people up off the floor, things of that nature, we've had 50 of those. Fire responses, total of 43. Our mutual aid response outside the city, automaticated mutual aid is 526 calls. Total canceled of those 526 was 93. Mutual aid received from outside agencies into our city was 53. Our average response time is just under seven minutes.
Thank you.
That's the report.
Thank you. Any comments?
No.
Thank you for your report. Okay, before we go on to our public hearing item, we have another request to speak. Mr. Mejia from Beaumont, would you like to come forward?
Thank you. My name is Adolfo Mejia. My son goes to Montez Montessori here in Calamasa. We're actually new to the area. We moved here about a year ago, and from LA, we love Beaumont. It's been amazing. The only concern we have with the school is it's right out, right when you exit on Singleton off the freeway, you make a right, immediately on Calamasa when making a left, there's a, there's a speed sign that's a 40 mile per hour speed, a speed limit sign. People drive by there, you know, like 50, 60, 70 miles an hour. There was a school sign about 100 feet after that 40 mile per hour sign. I did see that it was actually taken down. You just see the pole that's visible there. After that one, there is a 25 mile per hour school sign, but people ignore it. As far as that, it's really difficult to see cars when you're making that turn. And I mean, I can't count how many times I've, we've exited, and other families have exited from the school, and people speed by there, and they actually honk at you if you're trying to, you know, exit there. So it's very unsafe. I don't know those statistics of how many accidents there have been there, but it's, it's something that's very, that's very obviously worrisome for a lot of the members that go to the school, for the people that, you know, drive their kids to school, because people just swing by there left and right. My son, actually, he's five years old, but he wrote a letter along with a complaint that we filed to, to the, to the council, and they responded by providing a speedometer, which was, which was great. It was actually a few days after. The only worry, the only concern about the speedometer is that it actually shows 40 miles per hour, which it should be 25, but I think that's kind of what it's defaulted to, but people still kind of ignore it. So as far as that, I'm not sure what, what solutions there could be for that, but it's an accident waiting to happen. I mean, as much as you go there, when my wife is driving out of there, she, she has to look both ways really quickly and kind of, you know, like hit the gas just to get out of there safely. And I mean, like I said, it's been countless times where people honk as you're exiting, and it's, it's just not safe. And hopefully, you know, there could be something that could be done. I mean, if a police officer could just, you know, kind of camp there, that could maybe help out a little bit, but you know, the speedometer was there a few months back. It was removed and kind of continued happening overall. And then, not speed-related, but on that exit, on Singleton as well, there seems to be a homeless person that has a hammock up on the tree. My wife's concerned that they haven't seen the person move, so I don't know if, like, the person's okay, but I mean, it is also very close to the school, so that could also, you know, be a little bit worrisome for, for anybody that's there. But other than that, I appreciate the time. Sorry to, to you, be a little bit late on, you know, to the whole area, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No, we always want to hear from the community. But I'm very familiar with that, that it's, it's a blind curve. It's really strong.
Yeah, and I did want to say, so the speed trailer does also record the speed of everybody that drives by it, so we can look at that data. And then, we can also pass that along to the sheriff's department to help them with their, with patrols and having targeted enforcement, so.
Thank you.
We're already looking into that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, item number 11, public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing to take public testimony, and then we'll move forward with this item. And that's for the second reading of ordinance number 416, adopting by reference Part 7 of Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations comprising the California Wildland Urban Interface Code 2025 Edition, Part 7, Title 24, California Code of Regulations, including appendices A, B, C, F, G, and H, amends the International Wildland Urban Interface Code 2025 Edition of Part 9 of Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations comprising, comprising the California Fire Code 2025 Edition, Part 9, Title 24, California Code of Regulations including Appendix Chapter 4 and appendices B, double B, C, double C, D, E, F, G, H, I, K, N, O, P, and Q. Say that real fast. And amending Title 15 of the Calamasa Municipal Code regarding the same. So at this point, I'll open it for the public hearing, for any public testimony. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Okay, with none, we'll close the public hearing and, and open it for council comment.
If you would like, mayor, we can have.
Are you talking on this item? Okay, you didn't fill out a, but, but go ahead.
Well, that's, typically, we do a staff report first before we do public comment, so.
And I recommend you reopen the hearing.
Okay, I will reopen the hearing, and we'll have our staff report.
Yeah, so I'm going to bring up our building official, Dave Fredborg. We did discuss this somewhat at our last council meeting during the first reading, so I just ask Mr. Fredborg to kind of clarify some things, some of the questions that were, that were brought up at the last meeting. So we're going to have to do that. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for reading. Just to clarify, we are bringing the codes for adoption earlier this year. Actually, no, there was an Assembly Bill 306, and we brought the building codes a couple of months ago, and now we're, the fire code has amended. Some clarification, nothing's really changed. It's just they took the construction-type items out of Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, and they refer it to a new code called the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And what that, what that code did after reading it through and researching it, it actually handled quite a bit of amendments that we had to have for local conditions before. So there's actually less amendments now than there were in previous times. And, and so it's just adopting the fire code, and, and that's basically it. There's really no big changes. I know councilman McKendrick had some questions on the defensible space and things like that. That's another California Assembly Bill.
Right.
It's kind of related. It's more of a, a real estate transaction thing that the Assembly has the fire department do.
Thank you. I know we did cover this extensively. Thank you. Are there any comments? We'll wait till we have public hearing. So at this point then, I'll open it for public testimony. Thank you, Mr. Rupen. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? No? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. No comments?
No, I, I don't have any comments, Phil.
No comments.
Neither, neither do I. So at this point then, we'll recommend that the, that the, we approve the second reading by title only and adopt ordinance number 416. Do I need to read it all? Thank you.
No, your words, I don't have them ready. Very well.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
So, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I thought you did, ma'am.
Okay. And you seconded?
I seconded what I said. What I said is not a motion.
Right. So I don't mind making the motion? He, I, I guess I made the motion and Jeff seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, 4-0. Thank you so much. Okay, business items. Item number 12, approval of City of Calamasa Community Grant Guidelines and Application.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, this static is, this is the last meeting, we'll have this static, so crush fingers. This item is for the city council to consider the proposed application and guidelines with regard to a community grant program. Historically, the city has provided funds to various nonprofits through, through community partnerships. These have included the Chamber of Commerce, Summer Lunch at the Park, and Concerts on the Green, as well as the city's support of the State of the City and Chamber Installation Dinner. In the fiscal year 2425, the city's budget for these partnerships totaled $16,240, with an additional $4,000 granted for the Concerts on the Green, for a total of $20,240. As part of the fiscal year 2526 budget process, staff introduced the concept of a community grant application process. This would ensure accountability and transparency for these grant dollars. In recent years, we have seen other cities negatively impacted by grants that have gone bad due to lack of oversight and vetting. We are looking to avoid this type of scenario while also opening up possibilities for other nonprofits that serve the city. The fiscal year 2526 budget includes an appropriation of $15,000 for this grant program. The proposed community grant application requests, requests that the specifics of an organization and the program or event for which the grant will support. Information requested includes verification of active nonprofit status, including the nonprofit's IRS letter of determination, a detailed list of the board of, of board members, years in existence of a nonprofit organization, program or event budgets, and the overall impact to the community should the grant be awarded. Each application will be screened by staff with a scoring matrix to ensure all grant requirements are met, the objective parts of it. Staff will provide a schedule of all grant requests for discussion and selection of city, of grant awards at a city council meeting, approved by the city council. In consideration of ethics requirements, staff recommends that any nonprofit organizations that currently, that have current city council members or their immediate families as members of the board of directors, that that respective council member abstain from the vote to avoid the appearance of favoritism. The finance committee met in August to review the draft guidelines and application. The committee provided valuable input and, and suggestions which have been integrated into the guidelines and application before you for your consideration. And our finance committee is, consists of Mayor Molina and Mayor Protem. This is. For this year, we are proposing to have, we'll try this, it's not much better, but, for this year, we are proposing to have grant applications available on our website starting October 15th and through the month of November, with selection by the city council to occur in December. We will also require successful grantees to report back to city council in June 2026 to present the results and impacts of the grant awards. In future years, we will open the grant application window in the spring with the call of the city council, having the city council consider the grant application alongside the fiscal year budget. That concludes my, my presentation, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Will. I'll open it up for council discussion.
No, no questions. Just thank you and the staff for the time going through this and doing a great job putting all this information together to track that. I know Manley and others had talked about some accountability to it, and I think this does a great job of doing that, so thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I think everything looks, looks great. I appreciate all the, the time everybody put into in the finance committee, and I definitely think it's much, much needed, and I, there's no, no additions or corrections from my perspective. I think everything looks good, and I think it'll help facilitate, you know, this process moving, moving forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, you had that opportunity previously to look at this in detail and keep me back on the grant for guidelines and the application, and I'm satisfied to put it here. I think it's really good, and I also want to thank staff for their, their input and all the time they put into it. Thank you.
Yeah, my only comments are that we are, our anticipated goal is that we have more participation from the community to take advantage of this program, and so I think it's a fair playing ground, and hopefully it'll encourage businesses to come forward. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Calamasa Community Grant Guidelines and Community Grant Application.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Pass. Okay, mayor and councilmember reporting of council and regional meetings conferences. Eric, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did attend on October 2nd, the Regional Transportation Now, the T-NOW meeting held in Beaumont, and this typically, I don't really have a whole lot of stuff to report from me, except this last year, the conversation with, he was a member of RTA. It was a pleasant announcement to make to the group that we are looking at having a micro-transit program here, much like San Jacinto and Hemet did. This will offer our citizens an opportunity to use public transit, those that want to anyways. And, and it's not because RTA or the county doesn't want it, it's just it was not really a lot of ridership, and everything that's driven on public transportation, as you know, is ridership. So this, this pilot program hopefully will be good for the city, good for the citizens that want to do that. Beaumont's Transportation Group was pretty happy to hear that and had even talked about possibly making a, like a transition stop somewhere within the city so that our citizens could get to, you know, their, like Walmart and things of that nature, the movie theater or whatnot, to, to, to go do their shopping and then use public transportation. So, so it was very positive, and it was, it was a really good meeting, so just wanted to pass that along. And wasn't necessarily a meeting, but on October 3rd, I was happy and proud to be on a foursome, of which I was the worst player, for a charity golf tournament that we had at Canyon Lakes with Councilman Cervantes and city manager Colbo, and also our city engineer Mike Thornton. And it was for good cause, and it was no cost to the city, it was all out of our own pockets, but it was a charity thing, and, and it was, it was, it was a good day. It was a good day of, of, you know, golf and charity events. And the last thing I will say is, I do have to brag a little, I'm a newly- will say is, I do have to brag a little. I'm a newly grandfather. I don't know what the proper term is for that, but grandbaby was born this last weekend, healthy little baby girl to my son and his wife. So congratulations to Pat and Alina, and welcome to June, Condeff. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let you get to the greats.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did not attend any regional meetings, and that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Jeff?
So I attended the WRC, WRC meetings today, and... Transpired, but you were... And attended the golf charity event, and I don't know, maybe I was slightly better than others, but certainly the city manager and our city engineer carried it. Also want to, I was unable to attend our city, State of the City event. Unfortunately, I was teaching at the time, but I did have a break in between classes that permitted me the opportunity to go watch it for a while. And it was great. It was a fantastic event. It looked really exciting, a lot of fun, well-attended. Appreciate the staff's energy and creativity and putting it together. I received multiple comments from people that it was a fun event, from councilmembers from Beaumont in particular. And so, thank you to staff for that. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to, there's no one here from the, from the chamber, but it was a very nice event, our State of the City. It was well-attended, and it was a lot of fun. Food was terrific. We had hospice to provide the food, so. We all wore colorful shirts, which made it a lot of fun, and a lot of our staff attended, I think. It was, it was a proud day. Also, I attended, there were several meetings canceled this month because it's the California League of Cities Annual Conference, and so there's no competition with the other entities. Meetings were canceled this month, RCTC and RTA. This coming week, I just want to announce that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is the League's annual conference, and so I will be representing the city as the delegate. And just wanted to bring attention to, on October 14th, at the Fourth Street Park, the Recharge Basin and Turnout Project by San Gregorio Pass will be conducted, and so I invite all the, the public to come to that. It should be a proud moment. That'll be at one o'clock at the Fourth Street location. And that's all that I have to report. And so with that, we'll move on to the city manager comments and reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to echo Councilmember Condeff and Mayor Protem Cervantes on the golf event. It's a good time. Hopefully, more cities will attend next year. And I will just end by saying that our city did not finish as the lowest, actually, we were the highest city represented in the past.
There you go.
I'll just say it that way. We were the best represented from the past. So, we'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Well, pretty soon, there might be pickleball. Pickleball's coming. Okay, so I understand there is no closed session tonight? No closed session tonight?
No, there was one. I'm not a session, but there was nothing, a priority discussed on that matter, so there will be no closed session.
Okay. So without any further business, I'll move to adjourn our meeting tonight to the next council meeting of October 20th at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for coming and for your contributions to the meeting.